Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance and maybe the Eagle Scout can leave and see where the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joshua. First, need a motion to approve the City Council minutes of September 4th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Second, I need a motion to approve special council meeting September 11th, 2014.
So move. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Have motion carries. Communications and petitions. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters now listed on the agenda? Okay, written communiquees. I do have two items. One, the Wooddale Park District is planning for the future and they have a community meeting on October 21st at Salt Creek Golf Club at 7:00 PM. And then they will have a follow-up meeting December 2nd, also at Salt Creek. That's regarding the future of the park district. We also have on October 20th, Monday, October 20th, at 7:00 PM at the Junior High Fair will be giving a short presentation on airport noise. I know a lot of residents are interested in that and I have asked a couple of the Aldermen, Alderman Peter Jacob and Alderman Eugene Wesley, to basically be the liaisons for that ad hoc committee for airport noise. And that's end of written communiquees. Under Mayor's report, AIM presentation, I think Chief Vest are you taking the lead? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, hi Charlie.
Come on up. If I could have the four officers that are being recognized come up here by the podium too, please. Coming before you tonight, we do an annual recognition of our officers that take such an active role in DUI enforcement throughout the community. DUI and driving under the influence nationwide is a problem. Every 51 minutes, someone dies of a fatality. So while we're here finishing this meeting tonight, someone else is going to die of an alcohol-related fatality. It's one of our big missions in the Police Department and in this area. We receive also special funding from the state to go out and enforce DUI violations. And amazingly, even with all the press out there and the awareness about drunk driving, last year we had 174 DUI arrests in the city of Wooddale. These four officers up here, they combined for 116 of those DUI arrests. But, you know, obviously, time of day working can affect that, but out of 17, out of our 20 regular patrol officers, or out of our 20 regular patrol officers, 17 of them made DUI arrests last year. You know, obviously, the most of ours are going to come on a midnight shift, but we do have them on day shift and, you know, some on afternoons too. So... There's a lot of numbers, statistics out there about DUI, but some of the other numbers that aren't going to be here tonight are the ones that these guys may have prevented fatalities from some of the arrests that they made and stopped and got a drunk driver off the road. So... I'm going to turn it over to Charlie Woolley and so glad you're here tonight. What a wonderful surprise. And she can address the council for a little bit too.
Good evening. As most of you know, my name is Charlie Woolley. I've been here almost, I think, now 14 years. My stepson Eric Woolley was killed in 2000 at 9:00 in the morning by an impaired driver. I'm going to say, it sounds strange, but if it was going to happen, I'm thankful that it happened here in this city and in this county because DuPage County did go after the person. He was in jail for almost 12 years. Unfortunately for us, he did get out this year. He got out just before Eric's 32nd birthday. Eric was 17 when he was killed. He would have been 18. He had graduated from high school. I see all the Scouts and my husband was a Scout Master in Schaumburg and both boys were in Scouts. He was in the Order of the Arrow. And Eric and his father did the vigil together. That was the last thing they did together. If any of you go to Wild Rose, the fireball that's there is in Eric's memory. That was built by his dad and his brothers and his fellow Scouts. One of our board members, our City Council members, her granddaughter swam with my son at Conan High School. So there are a lot of ties. I come from near the Iowa border, just specifically for this 10 minutes to do this because I am extremely thankful to the officers and to this village for what they've done. If it hadn't have been for their police chief and the task force that was developed, this man would have gotten away again. He had been a repeat offender. Again, drunk driving can happen at any time. I do a lot of speaking. I'm going to be speaking again tomorrow evening in Galena, Illinois, in front of impaired drivers. It's a victim impact panel. The ages range from 16 to 86 this time. So it can happen at any time of the day. Once again, I'd like to thank the village and also I'd like to thank the officers and I'm very blessed to have been here this evening to present these awards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Charlie. You know, and you mentioned repeat offenders. Last year, we had 13 cases that were approved for aggravated DUI, which is people that have had previous DUI convictions on their record. And I know we had a few more that were reviewed for potential felony upgrades too. So, you know, some of the officers' faces you see up here are frequent, have been up here a couple of years in a row. We might have a new one up here too, but it's kind of interesting. It's not just a one-year flash in the pan or a one-hit wonder. You know, these officers, between them, I think are over 400 DUI arrests in their career. So during 2013, the four officers and their totals, Officer Adrian Regula, he had 42 DUIs. Officer Alan Pycock had 32. And Officer Grant and Johnston each had 21. So, you know, Alan, I know you're approaching the 200 mark in your career and Adrian's just over 100. And, you know, by getting this message out, we hope that someone will make the right choice. It's a tragedy that's completely preventable and hopefully, you know, the public education will catch on and prevent one person from making that choice at that night. So... So to present the awards, we're going to have Charlie Woolley presenting to Officer Adrian Regula. Thanks for your enforcement of DUIs last year. And Officer Alan Pycock. Officer Evan Grant. And Officer Alex Johnston. So if you guys could join me, congratulate these guys and thank them for their... Thank you, guys.
Pack 34 to come up and their leaders. You guys can line up right over here, no problem. You can even line up in front if you like. Don't worry about it. Face the audience. You guys can get closer if you want for the pictures. Don't be shy. We'd like to thank the Cub Scouts of America Pack 34 for the Prairie Fest 2014 for all their help they did and volunteered at the fest this summer. Whereas the city of Wooddale seeks to honor and thank Cub Scouts of America Pack 34 for their service to the city of Wooddale during Prairie Fest 2014. And whereas volunteering once time and resources has been an integral part of our community and it is essential that we continue this tradition to improve the quality of life for all citizens in our city. And whereas the Cub Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, that we thank the Cub Scouts Pack 34 for their service to the city of Wooddale. Thank you, guys. All right, we have some patches here for community service. Austin, congratulations. Good job. Patrick. Eric, oh Eric. Sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry. Thank you. Wait right here, boys. Community service for Ryan. Thank you, sir. There you go. And Gerald. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your dedication, guys. Good job. And the council would like to shake your hands.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Hold on, hold on one second, guys. Yes, Alderman.
Could we get a group picture and we could put it in the newsletter?
Sure. Get together, guys.
No, group picture in front of the dais here.
Yeah, we could do. Go ahead.
Take another one.
Do the parents want to come up in the center and take a better picture?
You guys, you guys gotta get to our finance department and learn how to count. It goes right to three.
Who's counting in his head? Who's counting in his head? Now I'd like to ask Joshua Henry Bear up to the podium. Joshua just earned his Eagle Scout this past Sunday. Maybe before I read the proclamation, you want to speak about the project you did?
For my Eagle project, I did, fixed and redid a retaining wall at the Holy Ghost Church, 52 feet. It was the biggest project that my troop has done. It took about almost 300 man-hours, so I had a great turnout. And it, I had a lot of help from donations and stuff. It was, it looked really good and like the church, I was thanked being a lot because a bunch of people tell the church like how it looks a lot better and looks more stable.
And just to mention, to become an Eagle Scout, I believe it's 2% out of all Scouts actually become a full Eagle Scout. That's a great accomplishment. Eagle Scout Joshua Henry Bear. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. And whereas one of the major objectives in the scouting program is to develop citizenship through community involvement and in addition to workmanship for citizenship. Merit badges, scouts are encouraged to participate in community service projects. And whereas Joshua Henry Bear is a member of Boy Scouts of America and has not only proven himself to be an outstanding member, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Now therefore, I, Mayor Anunziato Police and the City Council of Wooddale, recognize Joshua Henry Bear as worthy of this highest honor and encourage him to continue his commitment to excellence. Congratulations.
Now you learn how to count.
Mayor, send that to your report. Yes. Are you ready? And that concludes my report. Mr. Murmas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of items. First, just a couple of calendar reminders. The Police Department will continue their successful coffee with the COP program. The next event will be held on November 18th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Starbucks inside of Target once again. Also, there is now a date for the Shape of Wooddale Town Hall Meeting Event with all the taxing entities presenting accomplishments and chances for question and answers with residents. That is on Wednesday, October 29th. I believe that's at 7:00 PM, I think.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. One last update. Every month, the executive directors of all the taxing bodies in Wooddale meet and discuss relevant issues. This past month, Wooddale staff met with this group and talked a little bit about the city's potential TIF project upcoming. This wasn't the first time we touched base with them, but it was a more in-depth report. And we also will be likely offering to give a presentation at one of their next board meetings, each entity's board meetings. So we've extended the presentation out there for them if they're interested in that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. I will entertain a motion for the 11 items on the consent agenda.
I make the motion.
Second.
Any objections, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next, I need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of replacement of vehicle 416 and a not-to-exceed amount of $18,511. Item number two, an ordinance amending the city of Wooddale, number parking ordinance, Chapter 15, Article 20, Section 15 dot 2005 of the city code to include no stopping, standing, or parking on Potter Street from Central Avenue to Pine Avenue between the hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Item number three, approval of partial payment number nine to Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated for the North Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrades Phase 1B project and a not-to-exceed amount of $1,866,806.68. Item number four, approval of partial payment number one to Swallow Construction for the Ward II Phase 1 infrastructure project and a not-to-exceed amount of $553,193.55. Item number five, an ordinance amending Section 2.106, the municipal code of the city of Wooddale, providing for participation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Item number six, an ordinance amending Section 14.402, the municipal code of the city of Wooddale, providing for nuisance animals. Item number seven, an ordinance annexing certain territory commonly known as the 17 West 111 Deer Path Road property to the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois. Item number eight, an ordinance authorizing variations to parking lot setback and landscape requirements as a result of state taking of property at 935 North Central, Wooddale, Illinois. Item number nine, approval of change order number two, Williams Brothers Construction for the wastewater treatment plant and not-to-exceed amount of $117,304. Item number 10, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and HR Green Incorporated for the engineering services and a not-to-exceed amount of $30,620. Item number 11, approval of partial payment number two to Swallow Construction for the Ward II Phase 1 infrastructure project, not-to-exceed amount of $276,178.46. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning and zoning, building committee, an ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 7, relative to fees applicable to annexation and other zoning relief. I'll make that my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Upstate.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That passes. That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Oh, I thought I heard her say, I'm sorry, Tony.
No report.
And that concludes your report. Right, Alderman.
Yes.
Thank you. Public health and safety. Alderman Roy Wesley.
This is a revised agenda?
No.
It's not there.
It's on the revised.
It is revised.
It was a revised agenda.
Managers. Mr. Manager, it wasn't in my packet. It was on the...
Go ahead.
Where's the police chief?
It's just a motion.
Need a motion, ordinance amendment, Article 5, Chapter 5, Article 3, Section 5.305, municipal code, city of Wooddale, increase the number of license, number of class license, AR liquor license authorized for insurance.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
No.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes.
That concludes your report.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Alderman Lazara.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a resolution for temporary construction easement for the installation of a sanitary check valve for 277 South Cedar Avenue.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
I just wanted, did this come up recently because of the flooding issues over there in the ward?
Mr. Murmas?
From time to time, we get these check valves on agendas. It's typically for residents that have repetitive problems and this has been a program that the city's offered them for some temporary relief until the grander infrastructure plan is corrected.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes.
Number two, I have a resolution for temporary construction easement for the installation of a sanitary check valve for 315 South Cedar Avenue. That is my motion.
I'll move.
Second.
No, we have a motion and Alderman Wesley was second. Any questions on that one?
No.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
Resolution for temporary construction easement for the installation of a sanitary check valve for 534 West Potter Street. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Catalano. No questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
That passes. That passes.
Approval of purchase of wear and baffles and existing clarifier for the North Was- wastewater treatment plant in amount, to exceed amount of eleven thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Approval of partial payment number one to Kim Construction for the Manhole Rehabilitation Project Areas One and Two and the not to exceed amount of seventy-four thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
A resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wood Dale and Baxter and Woodman Consulting Engineers for design and construction services for the Potter Street pond and the not to exceed amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Woods?
What is this, does this encompass any of the rain guard issues or just the ponds?
Mr. Murmice?
This is for the establishment of a rain garden, taking into an account the conditions that are out there to make that work.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley, you had a follow-up or another question?
Did we ever find out ballpark figure what it's going to cost to maintain it? Because I think that was a discussion.
That was the other pond, this one will take care of it.
Oh, this one will take care of it. Really? So, I mean, I know there was a heavy discussion on that, have we?
Mr. Murmice, go ahead.
I believe the closure on that was, not really closure, it was kind of a to-be-determined once we move a little bit further along with the ins and outs of the actual design that's picked for the rain garden, but it was the desire of the council to have it as low maintenance as possible to not incur any expenses in that area.
A follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Who submitted the grant for this?
Uh, city staff.
And is the grant ready to go?
Uh, well, no, I mean, you have to approve it, so, I mean, it's, will be ready to go, we'll be in on time.
The grant go out, the paperwork.
It'll be out on time, that's all I know.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Abstain.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a revolution authorizing construction preparation card in the City of Wood Dale. That will be my motion.
That's your motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Item number two, I'll make a motion to approve a ordinance amending municipal code of the City of Wood Dale to adjustment the monthly water rates and scavenger rates reduction.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions on that? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Winger, Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Item number three, amend ordinance amending the municipal code for the City of Wood Dale to adjust the water meter fees. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Item number four, revolution accepting the appraisal of parcel EO dash one B dash twelve nine one seven, authorization its transfer to the Illinois Tollway Highway Authority. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Question.
Hold on one second. Frank was a second. Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
Could you just tell me what, what parcel that was?
This is that, remember, we had the piece over by Lively that they wanted, wanted us to give it to them and they said, we get, we.
I got it.
We told them. Any other questions on that? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman, pardon me, Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes. That concludes your report.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. We have no other business. Approval of list of bills, September eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill September eighteenth, two thousand fourteen of three hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Alderman Catalano, second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve October second, two thousand fourteen, list of bills for two million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine thousand eighty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley, yes.
Mayor, I know we can't get away without me asking questions.
That's okay, no problem.
On, uh, page seven, Villa Park Office Furniture for seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Is that here? Was that the PD or?
Mr. Murmice.
Is that installed?
Who's going to take? Mr. Murmice, yes.
The PD furniture did get delivered and the other council executive session furniture did not get delivered yet, that's October, the week of October eleventh.
So, October eleventh, we'll have, and is this the?
Go ahead.
Town payment or is this?
This is the payment for the PD furniture.
Is that the full payment?
Believe so, yeah. And when we receive the furniture for council, then we'll then pay that invoice.
Well, right, because we paid it and, okay, that's all I have.
That's, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Just questions for Matt York.
Okay.
Highway sales, page seven. There's two questions I have. Page seven, highway sales and page twelve, Russo's Power Equipment. Eighteen. Let me pass that. Okay.
Anyone, anything on this one, on these list of bills?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. We have no executive session, no items to be referred. Need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?